Five percent, five percent raise for you people. We're careful and conservative with the monies that you allocate to us. And a five percent raise would help us maintain our status. With that said, I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Wallace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the agenda. Well, your Peggy rules of...
We're starting to get a long list, so...
Always do.
Yeah.
Well, we're early.
Should we do claims?
Yeah, let's do claims. We're a little early. If we had a chance to look out.
Yeah. I think my total for general was four, four, zero, two, four, eight, point seven, eight.
That's what I ended.
And drainage was more than I want to spend, but nine, six, nine, nine, four, five, point four, two. I'd make a motion to approve.
I would check him out.
Favor?
All right.
Oh, Terry.
That's what happens, I think, when you get two drainage projects varying at the same time. You spend just above a million dollars.
Yes.
It's just the drain. And you have to go back to this one to do the regular cleanse.
And then when the things fall like that, it's probably a lot of work. Taking into them is really makes their... Otherwise, they sit here for till nine or 10 o'clock, whatever.
Oh, wow. Good idea.
Yes.
So you make the...
That's one thing... Well, Bruce is good at a lot of things, but that is one of his key...
If you keep him happy, there's a lot... It runs a lot smoother. Right, Peggy?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm reading through here.
If you help... Happy, this runs a lot smoother in here, right?
Yes, it does. It seems to, yeah. Thank you, guys, for being so accommodating.
While we still have Michelle sitting there, we could...
We can move on. Is anybody else coming?
No.
Okay. You're up. I'll get you eight minutes early.
I have eight more minutes to talk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So what I'm going to hand out to you guys is just an update for public health. Some information based on the state Department of Public Health survey that was out in November of 2017. There's some information on there as to where Humboldt County sits within not only the state of Iowa, but region two. And then there's just some overall service lines and then staff for you guys from 2017, 18, and the first half of 2019 that we're in so far, and also our funding. And then AJ put together... I don't know if everybody knows AJ Mason. He's the CFO of our hospital.
Hi, AJ Mason.
He does a much better job talking funding and like his service, speaking about funding. So if you guys wanted to... If you start off at this front, that's the survey. And so basically, there's around the state of Iowa, roughly 10 different structures as far as how public health are ran and based. We are... Humboldt County is a health-based, and there's 37 health-based agencies in the state of Iowa. And I think, like, on page four, there's a map that gives you the state of Iowa and which counties. The counties in blue are the health-based agencies. So you can see up in our area, there's quite a few. But our region runs from the Tisus-Humboldt line over through Wright County, and then you just kind of follow that southern line of Wright, Franklin, Butler, Gremer, Fayette. Clayton is not in ours, so you go up to Alamo Key and then back over to the north part to Tisus. That's our region. So when we talk about some of the numbers today, those are the counties that we're going to be referring to, basically. So you can see, we received $86,000 in county tax allocation from the board supervisors. Based on our region there, those 17 agencies, 12 of them responded to the survey. And you can see at the bottom of page one there what the average is. And the minimum tax allocation is zero dollars. And but when we talk about averages across our region, it's 154,798. And so similar counties of our population base, that was the average that they would typically receive for their county. And that all comes from IDPH. So that's all the... All the counties that have responded to the state survey in 2017, that's the information that was provided. At our public health, we, as I said, we're a health-based agency, but we run about 20 different service lines-ish. It kind of is hit and miss. We're kind of a catch-all for the county as well. So when someone has a question about a dog ordinance or a bug infestation, those... None of those are listed here on our service lines, but we're the front, we're the first call. So we do a lot of just care coordination with the other healthcare providers in our county as well. And none of that gets encompassed in any of these basic service lines. It's just some things that are the right things to do. And we need to be a partner at that table so that we can ensure that we are in people's homes, we're serving and meeting their needs in order to keep them out of RER, to keep them out of the care centers, to keep them safe in their home. And that's what the majority of our service lines do. When you see the skilled nurse, seeing the homemaker, the personal care services, the health promotion visits, the hopes visits, the early head start visits, that's us out in the patient's homes every single day, just to ensure their safety, make sure their medications are being taken properly, you know, their homes are free of clutter, debris, that anything that would maybe cause a safety hazard for them. All of those types of services. And then in addition to the actual hands-on services that we get to provide, we often do the other things like the county preparedness, the communicable disease follow-up. So if there's cases of E. coli or salmonella, we follow up on all that to ensure that we don't have an outbreak going on in our county. We have a volunteer program that we kicked off about a year and a half ago where we help provide some transportation to people. If it's not a medical appointment, that maybe they need to go to the grocery store, or maybe they need to, you know, get other places in town, we have volunteers that will help us out with transportation for them, and also respite services to go shit with loved ones in their home because we know that caregivers need a break sometimes, and there's maybe not always funding for that. So we have a volunteer program that two of our staff have started, and so that's been pretty popular. And then we also do the tobacco sensation, and we were just approved this last year to per... To be a consumer-directed assisted provider for the final HCVS waiver that is offered through the state of Iowa as well. So we can provide... Elderly waiver, physical disability, versatile, on total that we can become the providers for them as well. And that's a Title 19 funded program. So that kind of goes through there, and then you can look, the last couple pages there are the data numbers of the services we've provided over the last two and a half years, and then also the funding. So if you look, some of the trending that I'm seeing so far this fiscal year for us already is our skilled nursing visits and our health promotion visits. If we stay on track for where we're at right now, we'll at least double and be higher than we have been in the past two years. Our homemaker visits, if you look halfway through this year, we've had over 1,300 homemaker visits, and last year we had 1,975 altogether. So that is a booming program right now. And it's between that and personal care, that's when we're going in and we're doing grocery shopping, meal prepping, cleaning laundry, helping people with their baths, putting on their ped holes, making sure and ensuring that they're taking their medications properly in the mornings. So again, we can maybe help keep them out of the ER and keep them in their homes safer for longer periods of time. That kind of gives you the data, and then the last couple pages is all the funding. So where we have stat the last two years with our grant and truly what we have for this fiscal year as well. Some of the numbers have stayed within a few thousand dollars, except for the immunization grant went down about 3,000, and the preparedness grant went down 21,000. So that's a big hit to an agency our size. And we are very, very fortunate to be a health-based agency because, as AJ's going to talk to you a little bit about with the funding, come mid-May, typically, these grants have ran out of dollars. And so the IDPH grant, the Elder Bridge grant, the HOPE's grant, early head start grant, those are all... That's what takes care of us being out of patients' homes. And I can tell you, the Elder Bridge Homemaker grant, that... Every grant starts in July, July 1, and by September, we are out of that money, that 7,045 is gone. So all those people roll over to the next grant. And then if we run out of those dollars, they either have to privately pay for those services, which most of them cannot afford, and so that's when they mean on the hospital pretty hard to help supplement us to keep us in their homes, to help keep them safe. What questions do you have for me? I hear a lot of information here.
Well, my question is, on some of these, when you say that in 2019, we're already at a higher rate than what we've been, is that an indicator of our age in this county?
I would say probably yes. Yes. And, you know, we have a lot of elderly population in our county. We have people who are staying at home longer for many reasons. Some truly cannot afford a care center, can't find a care center, so they struggle with placement, and the family will ask us to come in and supplement and do some additional services to help provide that for them until they can find them placement. And some truly is just the aging population. And I like to give my staff a pat on the back and say some of it's because they know the professional... The level of professionalism and the care that they're going to receive. And so we have more staff outreach in patients as well that we just... You know, we get referrals from the emergency room, we get referrals from the EMS, we get referrals from other healthcare providers in the county saying, "We really need some assistance with these patients." And so our outreach and through the health promotion visits, what we do is I have one nurse dedicated to providing all the health promotion visits. Now, when patients are discharged from the inpatient care unit at the hospital, that nurse reaches out to those patients and goes out and does a home visit. The clinic, if they have a PCP out here, and the discharge coordinator from the hospital will contact them within 48 hours of discharge. We wait, and within some days, we contact them to make sure that the medications are still right and that they're getting to all their follow-up appointments. And then we will talk to them about some care coordination. So if it's something that Medicare will cover, we'll partner with Unity Point and get them in there. If it's something Medicare or private insurance won't cover, then we offer our services. And so we're doing a lot more outreach with... Through care coordination with the health partners as well.
So when you say your staff, how big is your staff?
So we have, we have four nurses. One of them is strictly committed to corporate health and work comp. And then we have three other staff, one that works three days a week, one that works four days a week. That's our nursing staff, and they take care of all of these nurse visits and anything that they... That a nurse needs to touch. We have three home carries, two office staff, two family support workers, an interpreter, and myself.
So they're really moving?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
That's a lot of visits for that few people. And then still to be there and spending as much time as the person needs to... Wow.
What percentage do you think of the people that are using your services, pay a certain amount, or... That's a really good question. Someone there on an Elder Bridge grant, there's requirements they have to meet for Elder Bridge. It used to be an income requirement, but they took that away a couple of years ago. So now they need to live in Humboldt County and be 60 years of age. So that's... When we go out and meet with a patient for the first time, we do a whole financial assessment with them. Do they have to report anything, farm ground, property, anything that they could receive some income from? And then we go over their expenses with them as well. And then we have a sliding fee scale that is based off of their income. So if they... There's 10 steps in that. So if they fall within the middle of it across the sliding fee, they may have to pay like five, 10, $15, and then the grant pick up the rest. For Elder Bridge, they first submit them. The grant covers 100% of that if they meet that financial criteria and everything in there. And their request is that they make a donation back to our office. If they go on the Iowa Department of Public Health state grant, then that's where that kind of co-pay comes into play based off of our sliding fee. And then some are over income, complete with their sliding fee scale, or they do not want to disclose their financials to us, which is fine. Then they have to automatically go to full fee, which is $30 an hour for a home carry and $120 of visits for a nurse.
So are you... Yeah, those are good questions. So are you finding that you're... How am I going to say this? Having more clients that are requiring more from the grants and so on and so forth than the people that are either their insurance or they are personally paying for the services? Is that... Is that a trend? I mean, because there's... Is it possible that, you know, some of your visits are... There's no money taken out of your funding?
Yes. Those are the ones who are strictly private paid. And we probably have... I would say that might be 5% of the patient population that we have that are private... That are full fee.
Yeah, that nothing comes out of any of the grants.
Correct.
And then you mentioned, like, after hospital stays, there's some things that insurance kicks in, and that's things like that. So I just... I guess my question is, is it a trend that you're getting more people, and it requires money from the funding to get to their visits?
Yes. What we're seeing is more... Lately, we've seen even a younger population coming in that maybe have early stages of dementia, that maybe have higher levels of mental health needs, that cannot manage medications at home. And we know that if we do not go in and assist them with medication management, they are going to land back in our ER. And so we... That's where we try to bring in our healthcare coalition and talk to all the partners at the table and say, "What can you provide? What can you provide?" Because we know our dollars are limited. And so I can maybe send a staff in for 15 minutes every morning just to make sure this person has taken their medications properly and not overdosed or underdosed themselves. But that 15 minutes adds up to an hour and 15 minutes for five days a week, and so, you know, it adds up quickly. And so we're kind of starting to see that trend where they're becoming younger and higher mental health needs as well. But then we also see the ones who are on the other end of the spectrum where they need the grant requirements, but they need longer periods of time of care in their home to stay there. They can't... They can't get to the grocery store, they can't do their own meal prepping. And so that takes a longer period of time for us to do that for them. So we kind of have both ends of the spectrum going on right now. And the other thing we do is if somebody comes on our services and they... Financially wise, we find out they're eligible to receive one of those HCVS waivers, then our staff will go out and help them fill out all the paperwork for that and get that sent in to the Department of Human Services to try to... We'll initially put them on a grant, but then we try to roll them over to a waiver service because then Title 19 kicks into that.
I want to take a... I notice on your map, there's the clumps. Everybody's kind of in a group that, you know, either you're blue, or is there a reason why in that location that people are... Your counties are not?
I don't have that answer, Bruce. I don't really know.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm curious, is it better for us to be in this versus the other? Are we getting better benefits by being that?
Well, I think that comes down to some of AJ's funding. I know that... So I think it was 1999 that public health transitioned from county to hospital-based. And so we've been hospital-based since 1999. We've been a Medicare de-certified agency since 2010. I know for us, that has allowed us probably the capabilities to not only partner better with our healthcare partners, but also serve the patient better, I think. Because being in the hospital, and if someone comes into our office because we're public health and they just automatically come to us, but we know that they need the emergency department, or they, you know, they need a high... They have a higher level of care, we will take them right there. Or having the clinic right next door to us, we're back and forth with them all day long. So I truly believe, and this is my personal opinion, being healthcare or health-based system has been a huge benefit for our Humboldt County public health.
I think, like you said, it provides that extra level of kind of flexibility, be able to transition those folks between different levels of care more easily. From a financial perspective, what I have provided here on this sheet, there's a three-year comparative profit and loss. And I'll talk a little bit about kind of some big concepts that impact our financials from a hospital perspective overall and impacts various departments differently. So on the profit and loss statement here, you'll notice the top-line revenue perspective. I've grouped these into just really four large categories. In the back of your packet, you do have those categories broken out a little bit more so you can kind of see at a little bit more granular level what those are, but for simplicity purposes to kind of show where that's laying out. So over the last three years and what we're estimating in 2019, we'll be right at about that $300,000 range for total revenue brought back in. That's been fairly consistent for us in the public health world over the last couple of years. And as Michelle alluded to, you know, there is a certain point when funding runs out for certain programs. But really, at no point has the conversation ever been, "Okay, funding's run out, so we can't provide the service." We always continue to provide the service regardless of whether those funding dollars are there. So Michelle and I have a lot of conversations on how can we mitigate the budget impacts of that, but that doesn't really impact the overall services that are provided. From a direct expense perspective, so on the... On this statement, I have both direct expense and then I have overall overhead costs. And I'll talk a little bit more about those overhead costs here in a minute. But from a direct expense perspective, you can kind of see where those are laying out. We do fluctuate there just depending on... A lot of what drives that is staffing. And you'll notice that a large portion of the overall total operating expense is from a staffing perspective. We did see a slight dip in 2018, but there were some different positions that Michelle was looking to fill that we needed. So it wasn't necessarily that. We found, you know, some sort of sustainability there. We truly do need that staffing, kind of really in that 430 to about $450,000 range to provide those services. The other thing that we see here, too, is benefits that are associated with that. So we have seen quite a bit of fluctuation in our benefits. Part of that is due to how we fund our overall health insurance plan at HCVS. So we're a self-funded plan, so it has claims rise, so it'll be expenses associated with that. So we do see some fluctuations there. The income before overhead costs, that's really truly the dollar amount that we would see on the income statement when we pull that on a year, monthly or annual basis. The overhead costs down below, one of the uniquenesses for our organization is we are a critical access hospital that receives cost-based reimbursement through Medicare. As part of that, on an annual basis, we are required to file a cost report. And on that cost report, there's overhead costs with overall organization that we spread out to all departments. As part of that, we do have to spread some of those overhead costs into the public health area. And public health is a non-allowable, non-cost-based reimbursed area. So Medicare will not pay us anything for costs that are associated in the public health department. The cost in fiscal year 2018 that we allocated there on our cost report was approximately $50,000. I'm estimating it'll be about $36,000 to $7,000 in fiscal year 19. But what that... What that really means in dollars to us is for that approximately $50,000 of costs that we allocate there on the cost report, that is about, depending on our cost-to-charge ratio, but in fiscal year 18, that was about $40,000 of less reimbursement to the organization overall because we had to put some costs there. So I just spell that out because that is an impact that we see. There's multiple departments across the organization that that happens to. Public health is not the only department that is impacted by that. But it does drive down the overall reimbursement for the organizations, slightly. Any other questions for me?
Well, I know I had to use it this year for my mother, so it was really nice that we didn't have to put her in the nursing home for a short period of time. So I do know your services are very well, and they're very respectful of the people.
I think our big act today, we've done, and I... Peggy and I drew up the contract years ago. We bumped from $75,000 to $86,000, and that's where we stayed. I don't... I can't go back any further to determine that in all the years that I've been there, $75,000 was where we were up until 2015.
2015.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that's when we bumped to $86,000. And so you have, in black and white in front of you, the trending that we're seeing and the funding that we're seeing. And I know, working with IDPH as closely as we do, that, you know, money's tight everywhere, and they just don't have pots sitting everywhere else either. But it's important to me, it's a passion of mine to continue to provide service and take care of Humboldt County residents to the best of our abilities and the best that we can. So we do run our staff fast and furious a lot of days because that's what we need to do. But in order to continue to do that, our ask is then to increase our county tax allocation.
Again, we're thankful for the dollars that we do receive, and really, any increase is very much appreciated. You know, when Michelle and I were talking about it, we landed initially on a figure of 125,000. However, you know, we don't understand... We don't know how the overall budget is laying out, and we're thankful for nearly dollar amount increase that we could receive. But that $125,000 range, the reason why I came back to that is that is approximately the impact that we see from a cost recording perspective on our organization. So due to the impacts of Medicare cost recording and the dollars that we cannot receive back from Medicare due to the overhead costs, that is approximately that increase between 86 and 100. So that's the method to charm that thing.
So you had 86... That was 86 from 2015 to now?
Yep.
That's what changed.
Well, just looking at the, you know, financial report, if you will, you see a little fluctuation in, like, looking at operating expenses, it does look like it was lower in fiscal year 18, and then it looks like it estimated to be a little higher by the end of fiscal 19. So, I mean, there's a little fluctuation there. But, I mean, it doesn't... It's not egregious. It's not, you know, hugely more. It's a little more than 18 to 19 projected, the, you know, which is... You know, which is good, but, yeah, it was lower in income before overhead costs. That seems to fluctuate a little bit as well. So, it isn't, I don't know, I mean, that, yes, everybody would like more money.
So would your one twenty-five request, would that put anybody, put more people in your office doing the job that they're doing? Is that what your plan is, or the stretching the dollar farther, getting more for the entire year?
I know, just through the trending we've seen so far this year, you know, the potential, we have another home care aide who just works for a PRN right now. But then, we have people who, you know, could use more services, but I don't have a staff to do it or the funding to do it. So I don't want to ever say that that is not an option for us. You know, we have to provide the staff to meet patients' needs, and so could we look at that? By all means, yes.
Or is it a question of not more staff, but more visits? And without drawing down the, you know, I don't quite, I kind of understand the fact that part of this gets paid, there's nothing to offset it.
Right.
And that's going up a little bit, and that's where you might be asking the funding. But, yeah, so, I mean, is it possible too that maybe not more staff, but maybe more visits and less financial drag because of more visits?
I would say at this point in time, just present day, I have staff considering as many visits as they possibly can in one day. So to put more visits on them right now-
Maybe more staff.
Would send me into overtime for staff. So there again, you know, it's kind of that double-edged sword of what's going to be the best.
Well, we'll take this under consideration when we're doing our budget.
Thanks for the nice presentation. Like an AJ along, yeah.
Well, you need to be talking to me, sorry, it's not me.
Well, that's fine, you can pretty much talk about everything else, Michelle.
I can talk about service all day long, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you both, thank you.
It was hard for me to be quiet back there.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. It's Rick here, I haven't seen him walk by.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into drainage.
Sorry.
You're welcome.
Yes, please.
Damn it, I forgot that, did you see that deal on the Ford Edge Messenger yesterday on drainage? I can clear back into the beginning, back into the nineteen hundreds, how drainage started.
Yeah.
I was going to bring that up here, I didn't get it all read. If you got the Ford Edge paper at home, take a look. I think it was in the business section. I'm guessing you didn't call Lloyd back.
I did, I texted him back, he said, he said, "You don't text the blind guy."
His daughter's back there, she might come up and wrap you in the head. Right, maybe?
What I'm giving you is the printout for the reclass of the main tile of branch C. Met with the commissioners Friday, we did several adjustments. I do have to add one thing yet, and I'm not sure whether we just have you at the hearing. They recommended a twenty-five hundred dollar charge to the agwell closure, which is what we've done on other projects.
Yeah, it's been done other times.
Yeah, so that's not in here. When I get back to the office, I'll check if we just add a column for that. I think that's what we've done in the past, is add a column, so.
So is that just total, overall, twenty-five hundred?
That's what we've done in the past. Yeah, yeah, that's kind of been-
Is that per agwell or per?
Per agwell. Yeah, this one only has the one.
This only has the one, right?
Yep, yep.
So it'll be a small column.
Yeah, oh yeah, it'd be one line item. And like I say, I'll just figure out the best way to get that handled. We use soils quite a bit, but we did do several reduction factors. There's significant area right down at the ditch, where there's actually land on the west side of the ditch, south of where we outlet. It's supposed to be drains around to the north. It's in the watershed, but they get no benefit, very little benefit because they've got surface drains. So the commissioners liked what I had done there. I did some eighty percent, some ninety percent on some small parcels, very small parcels, down below. They wanted me to increase the reduction for Harland, which we did. He's gone to the work of having an outlet from that agwell already. The district didn't have to put in a tile, they just had to do all the work at the ag or any twelve. So, because of his distance from the new main and the work he'd done already to get his water there, to ask for that reduction. And I certainly agreed that that was legitimate. The property just east of him, between him and the tile, very small reduction on the west part of it. It's confusing, I know, but. The other thing I did was, I went through a calculation of estimated cost to the landowners. The good news is that we're nearly a hundred thousand under ahead in the preliminary engineering for total project cost, which I was stunned, to tell you the truth. That's allowed for engineering to finish, inspection to finish, contractor to finish. Yeah, and-
There again, these are just estimates.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, good point. Oh, no, no, we're not, there's no guarantee, we'll see when we get to the end.
What did you base your hundred thousand differential?
On what we had for this option in the preliminary engineering report.
Okay.
So it was eight hundred and some thousand, and I came at seven hundred and fifty thousand for cost to the landowners. The grant amount I don't think will change. That was based on that, I don't know if you remember, M three lateral that was closer to the agwell. Yeah, and Harland and the other landowners, that in particular, I think too, asked if that money for that could be used towards branch C to help more people in the state and along with that. Yeah, Sandy, this is one where the state will pay up to three-fourths of the cost of a half-inch drainage for a vision project. That's where it'll drain off half-inch of rock and twenty dollars.
Twenty fifth, oh, okay.
But the most cost-effective project, there was a place that they could run less pipe and close the agwell. So that's the project that could be at seventy-five percent of.
Okay.
So, it was a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that is going towards this project now. You can see at the bottom of the back of the page, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand is what I spread for total cost. So the average cost breaker came out to almost exactly six hundred dollars, and it was a little over seven hundred dollars, I think, in the preliminary engineering report, even allowing for that grant.
So this obviously is totaled for the whole-
The whole thing, everything. Can I ask, who were the commissioners? Yeah, Brent Kena's and Pat Hill. They've done quite a few of these. Can't remember. Lot of them, in fact, they ask great questions.
They're both very good.
Yes, they get seriously, ask great questions. It was Brent the mansion to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, because he's been through that before.
Yes, yep.
So by doing it this way, if we accept the reclassification, set the hearing, then all we have to do is sit and wait for the work to be done?
Yeah.
Then we can still get it on levy?
Well, this can be-
This can be done.
This can be done.
That's what I'm saying.
Even without the work done.
Well, that's what I'm-
Oh, okay.
Trying to get to that.
Right, right.
Yes.
We're kind of getting the bills paid before we got the work done, which I'm a little nervous about, but.
Yeah, well, it's gonna, the project that will be done-
You're going on vacation, you give them the check before you go and really don't know if you're going to have fun, but they got their money and they really don't give a who.
Well, you're not paying the contractor.
No, I know, but-
Okay, okay.
They're getting ready to get levied here if everything goes forward, you know?
Yes, yes. This would be used to make that second payment, to try and keep that interest down.
Right.
Yeah. The twenty-seven, is that what we looked at, was forty?
Fifth, is what I-
Twenty fifth.
Forty days, right?
Yep, and that's forty-two days, so. Okay, I'll make-
We gotta have forty days from today.
I'll make a motion for the reclassification hearing for February twenty-fifth at nine AM. Can everybody get a copy of that so they can look it over?
February twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, she'll give us the time.
Yeah, that, yeah, like we were saying, she said, forty days following the final of the report. And then, at least twenty days ahead of the hearing, Trish has to have it in the paper and get a mailing to everybody, so she has to-
Get a second on that, I'll second that, and we can discuss it. Second for the twenty-fifth, if they're worried.
You said nine?
So we got the motion and the second on the reclass, right?
Right. Has anybody asked an objection to this, they do it in writing, is that correct?
Writing, yeah, at or before the, yeah, before the hearing starts, technically.
Yeah, if anybody has an objection, they have to have it to the drainage clerk in writing before the hearing starts.
Yeah. Yeah. Preferably some kind of reasoning behind it, whether it was some cost change.
Maps, or tile maps are always helpful.
Yes, yes.
Any other discretion on that? All favor?
Aye.
Both, carried.
Can we get a copy of that, Rick? Yes, yep.
Is that all we got, what's the? These are all different.
Right.
And that would give the, yep, and that would give the acres per.
On the total amount that they're accessing, okay.
Yeah, stop me if I'm-
No, that's a-
Well, don't ask me anything because I'm still stumbling around.
The column on the right is the one they don't like.
Yeah.
Right, I kind of figured, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, this is, any big tile project like this is quite expensive. I stopped by the job this morning, coming in, they had all the equipment running, but they hadn't started digging yet. They're about to place an elbow at station fifty-five, I think it is.
It looks like they've been making progress here lately.
They've been edging forward, yeah, and they're keeping the backfill of the clay right behind the pipe installation, which is good. And the black dirt isn't far behind, there's a few piles out there, so. But, yeah, they're placing an elbow this morning and then have straight line for a while again. Yeah, last week they ordered concrete and did several, I don't know what you'd call it, closures or whatever you want to call it, around connections. They had a damaged tee that couldn't get replaced, so they formed and did concrete around that connection too.
Is that this connection, pictured one here? Is that the one that was damaged?
That, yeah, that's Harland's there. When I had the pictures loaded up Friday night, and now I can't pull them up again. I don't know what's going on, I just keep saying it's going to the cloud.
I think it's the internet here, possibly.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I'm gonna, I visited with Harland on, over the weekend, and I guess kind of have some questions on that. And I know that, you see the size of that pipe? And when they got that pipe in there and where the tee or where the connection is for that, you can see the angle of that. And I think that was their biggest concern. But if you look at the next picture, it shows you the depth that the thing is in the ground. So when you say they're backfilling, I'm guessing that when they got that backfilled and the tee was probably up a little higher than they would have liked. But Harland said they went and put some, what, plastic over it? Then they put fabric and some rerod over it, and then they dumped the concrete with the calcium in it. And I'm hoping that it's sealed before it was buried.
Yeah.
So I guess, I, after visiting with you, I reassured him that, you know, this thing has a year, basically, a warranty, and hopefully, it'll be plugged. But I guess for all of us, we're trying, everybody's impatient. We're trying to figure out, get it done, get everybody out of there so we can get on to spring and hope that the water moves through there like it's supposed to. So, I guess, for lack of a better term, they were just a little worried about the angle of that thing and whether that tee or whether that connection got closed properly, so.
Yeah, they've been using rebar to help hold all the concrete together at those connections, which I think is the right thing to do.
In all fairness, it looks a little shoddy. I mean, isn't there some other options to get a better fit for those connections? That is a lateral going into the main tile, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And what size is that, fifteen or eight?
Eighteen, I think, isn't it?
Eighteen, it looks bigger than that.
But it doesn't connect with eighteen, does it? It's a little bit fifteen, yeah, it's a fifteen back here.
Oh, then he switched to an eighteen.
Going into an eighteen to make this connection.
Is there a particular reason, so that's a lateral going in? So obviously, the lateral is higher than the main tile.
Yes, yes.
But they couldn't have adjusted the grade of that just a little bit to get that connection to line up?
I believe what happened was they placed this and approximated the angle, and then went on, and then-
Come back later.
They decided to go further with this pipe to get that more gradual coming in. We didn't want it real steep, and then it didn't align with how they had that set. I'm pretty sure that's what happened.
Okay. Because obviously, if it's going downhill a little bit more, that hasn't hurt.
Oh, right, right, oh yeah, that's right. Yeah, with the rebar in the concrete, I think that connection's going to outlast all of us.
Well, I'm sure of that, but I guess I'm just more concerned that every time you have a chance that those things, that's the reason they're tongue-in-groove, so that they slide together and you have the fit.
Yep.
And I'm not very smart, but if you don't have that fit, if I have a plumber do something like that and I look under my sink, I don't think I'd be patting him on the back on the way out the door saying, "Here, let me pay you the," whatever it is. And I guess that's my feeling.
Sure.
I'm hoping that it was fixed, it was put together properly, but it just makes you nervous. And that's when they're trying to go back and do those laterals is where the problem is, is that they aren't on the same level.
Yeah. Boy, I understand the concern.
And I'm not an expert by any means, but you can look at that and it makes you nervous.
It would, absolutely.
Are these lateral connection areas being marked GPS located?
Yes, yes.
Are you getting that information to-
Yes, pictures with GPS location.
So that, I mean-
Yeah, we'll be able to know. I think it's like three or four feet or something, I mean, it's really close.
I'm getting a, I'm getting a negative connotation from the audience here.
Well, they were taking the pictures and getting the GPS on them, is what I was told. I'll check with them today.
I think it's written in the contract.
It's very solid, it's in there.
Absolutely is written in there, yeah.
Show us the pictures from the ninth and the tenth, and show us where that, the eight-inch one is in the pictures.
I, yeah, I'll have to get Jordan in here to try and- Some of them were the contractor's, because they're the ones responsible for giving us the location.
Jordan looked at it, there's an eight-inch tile between the connection between the old line and the new main. And then farther, let's see, farther south is the tile of ours. In between them two was an eight-inch that comes from Watnum's that nobody knew where was that. Jordan saw it on Wednesday evening, knew that they were gonna connect it up on Thursday morning. By, I was, I got out there about ten o'clock and they were just sprinkling the rock over the top of it. About ten-thirty, Jordan shows up, it was all covered up. So tell me how he can have pictures of that.
Did you ask the contractor if he had pictures of it? Because if he's not there, that's the instructions there that we emphasize with them.
That's why I asked you to have the pictures here today to see what you got.
Yeah, I'll have to have him talk to the contractor. It's the eight-inch that I will-
Eight-inch coming from, it would be what, the southwest from Watnum's?
Comes from the west.
South, southwest, that angle, wasn't it?
Well, it comes pretty much-
Straight west?
From the west, and then they had to go over to get into the crossover pipe.
Right.
They wanted to put it into a private tile, and I said, "No, that's ours. I don't want any others in there," because I said, "If something goes wrong, that's our bill, because we have an easement to come across there." And so I don't want any more hookings to that.
Sure.
And we're too happy about it, but-
That's your right, is private tile.
That's our tile, and that's our right to-
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Yep, so that was done that way.
And that, I think that's the other point, Rick, because of the fact that with Gerke's getting done up there and these guys lagging behind, I think it's imperative that we have the ability to know that every time there's a lateral, those things are gonna be verified, and before it's covered, if Jordan's not there and they take a picture, that should be forwarded to you or someone-
Yeah.
So that we aren't out looking for that next spring with a huge hole, wondering how it could be sucking dirt.
Yeah, we want, we got a hole here, we want to know why.
Yeah, so I think that that's well within our right and well within their right.
Yes.
And like Rick said, this was-
Clearly stated.
Yeah, I believe it's in the contract.
I think it is.
Here's my thought on, you know, the pictures, definitely, we certainly have the technology.
Yes.
Secondly, this is what I'm thinking, when the completion of this project, you know, you have a plan. Of course, it takes a plan to start the project.
Yeah.
This is my thought process. The completion of this project, there should be, you should be able to take that plan from start to finish, and every junction, every hookup of every tile, whether it's a twenty-four inch or an eight-inch, should be able to have a GPS location all the way along that line.
Yes.
And a photo.
A photo, yes.
Yeah, we've been doing that with projects here, and giving the landowners not only a set of the ASGO plans, but a printout of the GPS locations for-
Well, and granted, it might not be to the inch, but it should be to the couple of foot.
Yeah.
Because it's-
It's very close, yeah.
There again, going back to this whole discussion, you don't want to see a picture like that become a problem down the road. Yes, we hope there's pictures, way more important entirely than it is that this is a connection, this is a connection, this is a connection, and there's no doubt. So that if something shows up down the road and you look at that and you say, "Yes, there's a connection."
Well, the bad thing is that, that's, what, eighteen foot deep? It's gonna take a while for that-
Fifteen, sixteen.
Or fifteen? It's gonna take a day or two for that thing to start sucking dirt.
Oh, absolutely.
It isn't gonna just, over the first rain, all of a sudden we got a hole development, because you're fifteen foot deep. I mean, it's down there ways.
Absolutely.
But it can happen.
It can happen, and by that time, it's already gonna be way more dirt there than we want.
The other thing I've been thinking about is I'd like to draw out the acceptance of this job so that we're into the spring of two thousand twenty a ways before we have to worry about that.
I was gonna say, is this right?
I don't think so either, but I'm just saying, we want to be sure we get through the next spring as far as their guarantee's still being good.
True. An extension of the guarantee, I'd like to not have the project drag on any longer.
No, 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 I'm just saying that they're about to make a final payment.
Right, did we do the, did they get their notice, did we get-
Yeah, that was my question, good point.
Yes.
This is the second letter that speaks to the fact that it is seed corn, and they say, I can, none of this is new information.
No, no, no.
And then this is a letter that Rick's company sent to the contractor, second, one of two, I believe.
Yes.
And this got sent certified?
Yes.
Have you heard anything?
They sent them both certified separately.
And you get the receipt back?
I haven't talked to-
Make sure you get that receipt.
She's on Friday. You'd have been the one.
No, yeah, this was just sent, so no response as of yet.
Yeah, I, could be on my desk as we speak, I, yeah. We wouldn't have gotten today's mail yet. But yeah, I would have guessed that we'll have the return receipt today, hopefully.
I mean, that's just, I'm just gonna look at the first one.
Well, sorry, well, looks like we beat that horse enough, well.
Um, Rick?
Yes.
Too much here, but Jordan and I talked about, and he was wanting to put a bunch drain up by Hundred and Eightieth.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's a real good idea. Is it all right if they just put out the lateral or whatever and I finish it myself?
Oh, absolutely.
Because I don't want it tore up any more than what it's gonna tore up.
Oh, okay.
Machine's going across, so I just do it myself.
Oh, sure, they can make the connections and just extend it out.
Yep, and then I can go from there.
Oh, perfect, that's great.
When are we scheduled to bore that, is that this week?
This week is what they told us last week, so-
Well, the weather looks like it's tightening up a little here.
By the end of the week, it's supposed to be cold, so I'm, that's something I'm gonna stop and ask them on our way out of here.
And my, and I'm gonna reiterate what I talked to you the other day about. When that thing starts getting closer and we have it bored underneath the road, we need to make sure that our numbers are coming-
Yeah, I mean, you know now the height, elevations.
Yes.
Well, I think these guys have that.
I understand.
The problem in the other project is they just trusted old maps.
Yeah.
We may be-
Don't trust anything, no.
On every one, while we're still quite a ways away, we check between. And we're also checking the grade as they go, and they've been a tenth to two tenths low, which is what we prefer, just, and they've always been consistent.
Okay.
Jordan says this crew is the most consistent he's seen on elevation, so.
Well, that's fine, I'm just saying, I'm gonna be sitting out there, because I don't want to sit over here when we have to explain to them how come we're a foot off.
Oh, jeez, oh, yeah, yeah.
So?
No, we've been checking it?
Perfect.
We'll keep checking it, and we'll check the casing once it's in, so we know the target they have to hit, so, yeah.
Awesome.
If you just use the highway for a reference, that we're talking about them getting, hopefully by the end of the week, because yes, it does look worse by the end of the week weather. How much further does that go into Harland's?
Two, three hundred feet.
Is it out to that little wet? Looks like a wet spot out there on the east side of the road, is that where it's shooting? There's a stake out there?
Yeah, I just, without looking at the plans, I see that they're getting ready, and I know we had the talk of getting under the road. It's really not that far into your field, then?
No.
That's the end, quote, unquote, end of the project?
Yes, yes, connecting into his tile in that field.
Well, you're connecting to the old main.
Or the old main, yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Right.
We're not going, we're not putting a new main to the end of old main.
Right.
If you have to follow that.
Yep.
The main continues on another roughly half mile, wouldn't you say, dial?
Yeah, I guess, I suppose so, Michael.
So roughly, how many laterals do you have coming across that they have to re-mer?
Well, I tripped Jordan out the other day and I've staked it out for him and everything, and they had it right around six thousand, now hit two, there'll be a six-inch clay coming off of Rodney's, and when they get thirty feet into mine, they'll get another six-inch plastic. Then they'll, there's a clay tile off of somewhere that I'm not sure where it's at, we might catch that, and I told Slim, I just send you plug it rather than connect it with the gas connected. Then they'll hit the main that comes across the highway, that's north of my building site. And then they're good up until right at one eighty, and then they're gonna get about, they get right into my pattern tile there, so there's probably about four lines they're gonna hit right within two hundred feet.
So that'll slow them down a little.
I could just send another, let this guy keep laying pipes.
How deep is that tile there, the main?
Oh, that's the one eighty.
Yeah.
Well, that's probably five feet.
No, so that's-
It's not lying.
Well, the new one is about eight foot, they're pretty-
Quite a bit.
Once they get about another two thousand feet, they drop down to eleven feet or less from there on, I think, two hundred.
I know sometimes when we're running real deep, we'll run a parallel line to pick up all the patterns and then just dump one into the main.
Yes.
Just so we don't have all these holes in the main. You know, why is that shallow increase of that?
Even having said that, even, well, it's not really, it's probably a better option to have one connection.
Yeah, because the more holes you have, the more thing-
I would think that Rick is absolutely right, because, and then the speedity-
Probably plastic tile that you've put in, or is it-
Yeah, mine's all plastic, I'll be different, but like I said, there's only, they'll hit one at Rodney's about fifty feet before my line, and then thirty feet into mine, we'll get a plastic. And it should be pretty good up until the county main can cross the highway.
South of one hundred and ninety, we're nine feet deep to flow line, so it's about six feet to the top of the pattern.
Right.
Are those still the, what's the size of them, are they?
That's thirty inches, ten.
Oh, it comes up to thirty?
Yep.
Are they still thirty-sixes out where?
They're at thirty-six, until they get, they're at thirty-six, so they get the, just past the county main that comes across from fifteen. And then it drops down to thirty, up to one hundred and eighty, and just before they cross under one hundred and eighty, I think it drops to one and four.
Good.
Yes. He's got it.
I was just, you know, I might run through the fields, pattern tile that usually run on one lateral.
Yeah, so we don't have to make so many connections, yes. This was a question.
And that should actually expedite it too.
All right.
Close them down, make some connections.
Yeah, so I'll be around a little while, um, Jordan should be out there.
Be in your hair.
Yep.
Uh, this thing over here on, he called me about they're digging on Seventeen, so I checked it out, and they found a bunch of ruts up by the highway from that farmstead that was blocking it. So they're just running like a hundred and twenty-some feet of new main there and fixing it for temporary fix, something.
This is one dash twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah. We looked at that ten or twelve years ago, but nothing was done back then.
No, they're just doing a minor repair to get it to work.
Excellent.
A little hiccup right there along the east side of the highway.
Yeah, and then, uh, this ditch out here is the bottom of this thirty-five, where it comes into city property. I was at a meeting this week with, um, Humboldt, well, Hostel was there and the city was there, and they were asking about what, where we're at on this project. And of course, they're all, they don't like seeing all the trees cut down, and I explained to them, they're just gonna take all the shrub out of there and leave a few of the more nicer-looking trees, so that, you know, aesthetically it looks decent. And they were just wondering where it was going, if we'd started progress on that, or-
Well, we've got the options on how you get the right to go in there, and I, I-
Something they mentioned, and I'm just gonna throw it out there, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. They said, "Oh, it would really be nice if there's a walking path along this stream."
Sure there is.
You know?
There's a couple of deer paths in there, and I'm hearing.
They asked me, "What's it gonna look like?" I says, "Well, we're gonna try to keep the grass twenty feet back, except for maybe a few of the bigger trees." And they said, "Oh, that would be very nice if it had a walking path along the stream." I said, "I'll throw it out there."
It'd be gorgeous.
That was just a comment.
Yeah.
So, they said they'd be more for it if that was included, put it that way.
Well, let's put it this way, if you clean out all the undergrowth, if you clean out all the undergrowth, you probably can walk along there.
That's right.
Yes, that'd be the idea.
We don't want to make it too easy on them, you want to make kind of an adventure on them.
But whether the landowners would like that, I don't know.
Well, where do we, how do we go from our option of sitting here on our hands, like we've done for quite a while, to getting this done before it gets warm again? Because once the trees start getting sap back in them, then they get a lot tougher to cut.
Oh, yes.
And skiers come out.
And mosquitoes are being-
All in that area.
Yeah, the question is, why haven't we been doing this?
Well, we gotta make a decision whether we're gonna annex it or just pay for, you know, basically pay for a right-of-way or annex it.
I don't know if any of you kept that sheet where I summarized the three different approaches that you could use. Yeah, it's just a matter of bringing it to a head, deciding whether-
Having a hearing, a public hearing on it?
Yes.
And then go through the process.
Well, I think right now is the option, you have the ability to go in there and you get clear pictures of the plugs. There's two or three different areas where trees have fallen over and they're catching stuff and it's holding water back. There's one area, there's four or five.
And the city likes the fact that it is holding the water back, because it slows down the flooding along Highway Three. That's their position.
Yeah.
But that's Highway Three, isn't their issue, that's the state highway.
How about putting it on the agenda for next week or whatever to try and decide which approach to use, and then we can crank out a report to meet whatever you want.
Yeah, because we gotta have some direction for you to-
Yeah, yeah, but that's kind of why I did that summary sheet of the options that you have to do that work, so that hopefully helps decide-
Because what were, do you recall what the options were?
We got-
Annexation was one, I remember.
Annexation was one, and another one is purchase-
Purchase right-of-way?
Yeah, you can purchase, um,
One drainage net?
Or you can buy easements.
Oh, purchase easements.
Yeah, purchase easement, purchase a right-of-way, or annex. Annex will be by-
I just want to get something done, because we get all this water that's coming out of it.
Yeah, I don't know why this is my wish. I think the more agreeable one is purchase easements.
Down to this area, so.
Because that basically does annex it into the drainage district, because it just gives-
Acres-wise, it's not much.
No.
No, 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 it's not very much.
You can take forty feet, half a mile, what is that, maybe?
Then it gives the right-
Acres, maybe?
To clean it, and it really doesn't cost-
Yep, go for it.
The adjacent landlords.
Right.
How come the property owners there, in the city of Humboldt, with the proposals I've been hearing today are getting a free ride? Ron Rasmussen sat here while the meeting, said there used to be two intakes, and now there are, what, six or eight, I think he said?
Several.
That water is draining in there, goes all that roadway, buildings, parking areas, doesn't absorb much water, it's running off. Why do they get scot-free?
At this point, it's a natural creek. The only way to get them involved would be through annexation.
It can't be assessed to the property owners that drain into it?
Not without annexing.
Yeah, we'd have to go through an annexation, which we can do.
I understand your point.
Does it become a part of the drainage district?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or are they their own area?
No, it'd be part of that drainage district.
Part of the drainage district, yeah.
So then when we do a clean out up way up line, they're gonna get assessed to it too, then?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, unless you-
It's really small, wouldn't it?
Oh, really small, because there's not much area by comparison.
They're not gonna like that.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, I own a building up there and I wouldn't like it, but what, I mean, I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna stand here and say, you know, the little percentage that my- Well, I'm gonna tell you right now, I own a building up there and I wouldn't like it, but what, I mean, I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna stand here and say, you know, the little percentage that my fifty...
Especially if you're only annexing forty feet.
Right.
You know, if you're annexing the whole eighty on, say, the east side, then it would get pretty expensive.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because they have more acres.
Yeah.
A waterway agreement type thing, where the...
With the landowners, that it's...
Just in that area, that they pay just for that and not become part of the district.
They can be approached with that.
But you get more and six tile up there.
There's different...
Yeah, but you do too.
Options, that way, the rest of the district doesn't have to pay for this outline either. I don't know, there's...
We've been paying to keep it clean from the highway on north, uh, and unless the city has been taxing them, they haven't been doing any maintenance to keep this from becoming the problem it is now.
Well, like I, I, I mentioned, they kinda like it this way because it slows the water down.
Yeah.
If you clean it out, it's gonna make a worse problem for them.
Yeah.
They're, you're gonna see much more water at Highway Three quicker.
Mm-hmm. And this is still a repair, I mean, if we just cleared the trees out, it's a repair and take the trees out of the ditch or the waterway?
But we can't do it.
Not without one of these things.
Without doing, without doing one of these.
Yeah.
We just can't do it without doing one of these.
Right.
So...
So she puts it on the agenda for next week to set a public hearing?
Would it be a public hearing or what would it be?
Well...
Really won't be a public hearing.
Not yet, we, we'd really have to have some kind of report on either easement, purchase and right of way or annexation. Which would just take us a few days.
Yeah, I think more like discussion on it to give direction for the engineer to...
Yeah.
Pick one of those three.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
Can you email that to Rick, because I don't think I got that.
Oh, sure, yeah, I wouldn't, you probably wouldn't have it, it's been a while.
Well, like you say, if you don't keep pushing it, it just goes back to the back burner and...
Well, it's been on the back burner and we actually had the meeting with the discussion and it lended itself to, or lent itself to purchasing easement. Probably the quickest way to get it done, so that we can get in there and clean out the instructions to keep your water flowing through there. That was the expediency of it.
Yeah.
And we could always take the option of dropping into the quarry to slow it down.
That was discussed and that didn't look very good. Yeah, because...
We had all this discussion, it's just, this has been a back burner issue because of bigger issues.
Yeah, because it wouldn't take long to bring that quarry up to whatever level that ditch is probably, one bit of rain and she's gonna be at that level.
There's a lot of acres there coming in.
Yeah, that, that was already a...
Matter of fact, some of you probably saw it when the, there was a few years ago where the water found its way to the quarry by itself.
Right, well, they got a little lip built up there on the rim now so that it doesn't run over and it's, it's got a little natural spillway that when that ditch gets full right by the cemetery, it can run into the quarry.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But I thought you guys were all waiting on me, so that's why I walked it, took some pictures of it, thinking that... But it has, something has to be done because we're putting more water to the ditch that it's gonna outlet. And I know the hospital and the Springvale, their trees and the squirrels and the whatever else lives back there, but...
Let's just get it done, let's get this, let's, it's bad, it's on the back burner, it simmered long enough, let's get it taken care of and, and I unfortunately hasn't took this long to get back to it.
Yeah, well, let's just, uh, hopefully a decision can be made next year.
I think, um, are we done with all of our stuff for drainage?
Drainage?
You got anything else, Trish? I'm not trying to take over, but I know Lloyd is here to, he has a couple of questions about drainage too.
Did yours come for your way?
I don't know.
What is it?
Oh, it's just old history?
Yeah, I'm done.
Well, you don't have to be, I mean, we'll let you have the floor for...
Well...
Let's get Lloyd to take it care of.
Yeah. I don't know.
Yesterday, uh, Lloyd called me and he has some questions on, uh, over there that, towards the Gilmore City area with the, the other one that's sitting on the back burner as far as the nine, um, ag wells.
Oh, yeah.
And he just would like to ask a few questions or see where we're, where we're headed and I said, when he called me, um, he got his daughter to bring him up here, so she's probably wishing we'd move along because she's got other things to do.
You wanna come up here later, huh? No? Okay.
So, I'll do a general overview for you Lloyd, if I screw it up, you yell at me and we'll stop, but he is, has, his recollection of the way the, the thing is, is moving is if that water all comes towards the north, uh, like the one proposal. Um, coming across all those fields that are pattern tiled, um, it's gonna be a mess. And he still thinks that there's an option that we should pursue going the other direction and would like, and I said, well, we haven't got any proposal. We're sitting here waiting to the, whether the state, that was gonna be my other question for you, did you get ahold of that lady that, at our drainage meeting that had your recommendation or so that we can try to get touch base with her?
Not yet, no. She was out for a while, so...
So anyway, that, we know that you've been hired by...
I just say...
The state to do the research on those, to get the more current numbers as to the flow and...
Yes.
And all of that.
We got nearly all the tiles located, um, shots on everything, um, they were trying to get out there, they had like less than a day left to finish all the fieldwork, be done. We're still looking at a report, hopefully in February yet, um...
So once that is done, that'll be given to Mike?
Yes.
Which then...
And, and, and the board through too, I mean, you're so deeply involved in this, absolutely.
Will that give us numbers as to, um, I don't know, like the flow, so that we would know what would be going, if they plugged it, made a wetland out of it, how deep the water's gonna get for all of the people that are concerned that they're gonna now have oceanfront property? Well, I'm not being smart, I mean...
Oh, I know, I know.
When the kids showed the map, I'd be, I'd be nervous if it all get out.
Down here last week and he just wanted to know we were coming, but I told him...
I mean, we get that question all the time, they keep asking us, how's it coming, and it's, the problem is, we can't do it, the peop, the landowners have to push it.
We were on it in a matter of days after we got to go ahead and...
You were?
Yeah.
The problem with this is like Rick said, this is not a drainage district, I mean, we've got the issue of getting the trees cleaned out.
Yeah.
Because that affects a drainage district that we have jurisdiction.
We can play that.
This has, the state has just critically dropped the ball on this. Why they didn't contact you to get the readings, if you will, that you've been doing, yes, and you did a good job and you said you'll have a report in February.
Yes.
There again, why wasn't that done ten years ago? You did some preliminary information, it isn't really a county thing, the county didn't mandate...
Oh, no.
Drainage wells to be closed, the state did. And yet, we seem to be pushing this along a lot quicker than the state has even attempted to.
Yeah.
They're the ones that are saying, if it's twenty twenty, you better have something in place. We see that, we wanna help the landowners out, we're always very concerned about drainage or lack of it, and why are they languishing around? It's the state, and the state's the ones that, you know, this wetland deal, which I think could be a good option, why hasn't there been information? I mean, I'm getting the same thing that everybody else is getting back from some landowners in that area.
What's happening?
Exactly.
What's happening?
Why is this so confused, why don't we have everybody at the table, and we've provided the table, how many different times in the last ten years? Then...
And Lloyd's concern is, is, he says, I don't have any, anything vested in this, it's his kids, but by the same token, any of that water that comes north and would have to go through, say, like those pictures, fifteen, eighteen foot deep and God knows how big the tile is.
Oh, huge.
Um, for a pattern tiled fields, field, there are several fields over there, it just, so I think our options, we, we owe it to everybody to try to figure it and that's what I told you. You're welcome to come up here and ask, we haven't got anything because no one's come to us with a petition and until that happens, we're just sitting like this, right?
Yeah, you, yeah, you'll need the report to try and get some idea of...
There again, it isn't, we say we, we're just this...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Putting this, I don't understand where the state is with this, IDAL slash DNR who wanted the closure of the drainage.
Well, the state is, they've notified the, the landowners that they're not gonna, probably gonna get a permit, haven't they?
I, I haven't heard from anybody.
Oh, other than that lady?
She might have said that, and if they haven't got them, I'm surprised. Yeah.
And there, when that happens, then it's gonna get some attention.
Yeah.
And hopefully the funding is still there at that time. And if it isn't, it's gonna be bad.
Oh, it'd be ugly.
There again, that's the, the meetings that we facilitated over the past couple of years, that has been brought up about the permits not being extended.
Yeah, that's what initiated the talk.
Borland keeps telling us all the time that that's gonna happen.
Landowners and the folks affected, I think, have that understanding and they're just looking for what you've worked, or have been working on, more definitive information about creating the wetlands. And I believe everyone's really disappointed in the fact that IDALs have stepped up their plate a little bit harder on this, you know, that, and we seem to be, yeah, we're happy to push them along, but come on. I mean, let's see, it's not...
I got one question for the, for the work you're doing, when, you know, they've talked about going south to two, how much does that increase the water level in two? If it did go south?
It, it depends on what you do with the wetlands, if, if it's just overflow, the gifts there, the, the effect is not too great. If, if you just tiled everything in this watershed down there, it'd add a lot. I mean, we, we, we upsized from there to the river basically to see about what that would take and it was scary number. We did that in a report for the state.
Well, didn't, didn't Mike have the proposal of putting part of that to the north? You know, breaking that up, part of it was gonna be wetland and the north side was gonna be farmable, so that was a huge tile, if you'd want the whole thing.
Yes, yes.
We still haven't got them all to come to an agreement as to, are you interested in wetland and versus farming? And they are fifty fifty there, so...
Yeah, every time we take a vote, it's fifty fifty.
And that was part of Borland's frustration too, was he was hoping there'd be some more definite direction.
More, more near like maybe a seventy thirty type.
Yeah, yeah. Because, yeah, the tile, you can do the flow lines, but it's expensive, it's deep, um, and you're going through these pattern tiled fields, I mean, there's a lot of drawbacks to that tile. But that's where, if they can get as much of it into wetland as possible, that's probably the best long-term solution. Everybody get paid for the ground and you'll have wetlands that hopefully you could mitigate with on other projects.
And then do the overflowed at two?
Yeah. I believe the overflow will be to two, I mean, we're not into that preliminary design enough to know for sure, but that's how it looks to me.
Okay.
So Lloyd, you have any other, that, that you've asked any questions, I'm trying to remember what we talked about.
You haven't gotten any answers either.
No.
You've been out there a lot longer than we have.
Yeah.
Well, I think that it oughta go south, you know, not...
Not towards the north?
You go through that, those pattern parts, that, that, spent a lot of money and not gonna get any benefit for it because you come through there, you're gonna, that's all plastic tile and you, sure, when you dig a trench, you only damage, you think you only damage the tile right there. But that plastic tile, it don't cut off sharp and everything and, but I don't, I don't know, is it? But it should be able to go south, but I don't...
Well, I, I, the last time we visited about this, I told Rick, I think that we should at least explore the option and so that if and when they do come with a proposal, that we at least have some type of idea. Which, which direction would be more feasible, which, I mean, would you be talking if we went south, like doing like they did up by West Bend and having to dig a deeper ditch?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. It was drastic.
Well, not only you gotta widen the ditch, then we got all these road crossings that are undersized.
For the ditch.
For the, yeah, because they weren't sized adding that many acres.
Right, yeah, it was a big effect. And we, we did come up with a number on what it would take to go that way, um, didn't have detailed plans, of course, they just don't do that, but, um...
So I'm, I'm trying to catch in my brain here, where, if we went from that area out there towards south, would we be going down towards that quarry? Is that the south direction that we're trying to hit that line down there by Seavers, or would we be angling off more towards...
It'd be southeast from, from the area we're talking about, I don't know how that works, it's southeast. We hit southeast, I think it's District sixty six, um, that this, that would be an extension of. There's, I think it's sixty six that goes to the northwest and then there's natural creek that goes on and that's what we tie into, um...
Well, we need to work this out so that we can have some type of idea to then...
My impression from what we know so far, it's gonna be hard to make any individual ag well area work as a wetland. But by combining them to a larger wetland area out there, we can make it work wetland. And if we can make it work wetland, we will reduce the flows that would go south significantly to the point you wouldn't have to do any improvement probably.
So then, back to the same question, if it's wetland, wouldn't you think the state would be interested to know how high the water's gonna come up? So in case we were to flood Highway Three, it would be interesting to know, were they gonna run a boat, ferry system, I mean, how the hell are they gonna get to Gilmore?
Yeah.
I mean, we haven't even been, we, we haven't talked to anybody in the state, have we? If that might...
We haven't, I haven't.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But we're talking about plugging nine drains, ag wells out there and how high the water would go, this, when that kid brought that thing that showed that his house would have water and run a pump, it scared the hell out of me.
It's, it's all part of the report.
Oh, I didn't mean to get it.
Wet years where the water level could jump.
Two, three feet.
Yeah.
You know.
We're having five hundred year storms every, two a year sometimes it seems, but, yeah.
It is now, that water comes up to the edge of the blacktop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of water out there. Yeah, it's all a part of the study, whether it's feasible at all.
Maybe that's what we talk to Crime Brink and then next, in February, when we get out, if we get to hold hands with him at a meeting or something, to talk to him and say...
Kick somebody in the butt, get him moving.
We really can't do anything until we know what our options are as far as how deep, how, how many... I'd be nervous if I owned farm ground out there thinking that they were gonna come across that and...
Absolutely.
Did the state fund to pay all this then, or...
Seventy-five percent caution.
Thirty bucks and then the landowners pay the other twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so, I mean...
Of a tile project.
Of a, of a tile project, or the wetlands, there is funding also for that.
Yes.
But it's a different type of funding.
Then they can sell the, what is it, mitigation?
Yeah, and do a mitigation bank or...
I mean, it's so confusing, when you come in here on that meeting, you wanna have somewhat of a clear head because when you walk out, you'll swear to God they've been speaking Chinese and you don't have a clue what they've been saying, that's...
Yeah.
It is frustrating.
There's been a lot of good information presented.
Oh, yeah.
Like I said, the mitigation, the wetlands, there's, there again, doing thanks to Humble County, pushing it like we are right now. The state needs to get ahold of themselves and IDALs needs to, you know, they did at least have you go and get some hard factual numbers. Which, there again, day late and a dollar short, and get this put together for these folks out there.
We are finally at the point where they've authorized that report, that should provide at least most of the information we're looking for.
Okay.
All right. You're thinking February.
That's our goal, get it by the end. That's our goal, get it by the end of February. I mean, there's a lot of cranking to do, but Dallas and I have both work on it in the office.
And who was the person that Bruce asked if you'd called?
Mona Bond.
And she is?
I don't know, she represents, um, I believe it's contractors at the, at the legislature.
She's a lobbyist?
I, yeah. She helps them and represents them, and she's also been in our drainage meetings with Doug Strike, the attorney, and how we approach different things on getting code and that changed for drainage, and she worked-
Evidently, she's been talking with Doug, because I talked with Doug at the December meeting, and he was well aware of what's going on over here.
What did he have to say?
I just mentioned to him that Borland have a, you know, if it decides to go north, it's gonna be a fight. He says, he says there's multiple ways to handle it.
Sure, sure.
And I don't know, maybe we need to involve an attorney on the situation, too. I mean, they would give you a definite direction in which to go, but yet, it's still not a drainage district issue.
That's what, that's where you're putting your hand, we can, we can-
Well, first, the thing is, you gotta have a decision from the landowners, what they want done, and then we can-
Basically, if it's wetland, and not a drainage district, it's a state's deal. And it is really, anyway. Can you contact Mona, and then at least, I think possibly she could provide some insight, if nothing else?
Well, her comment at the drainage meeting to Trish was something that, when she said-
What, you haven't closed those yet?
You haven't done anything?
They are going to be done. She said that, um, with the changing of the people at the legislature level, that, um, the new guard, as she called it, that things will be changing, and they will not be, um, allocating money for closures in the future, she feels.
Nice.
So the timeframe is limited as to if you don't get going-
The funding won't-
Whether wet lands or tile?
And, you know, I was kinda like, are, really? Because I was in disbelief, because it's always like, um, you know, we say this, that they're gonna be closed, that they're not gonna permit, but then she said that, I'm like, oh my gosh, she's dead serious.
Well, I think we need to have some type of meeting with her.
Yeah, and I have talked to her.
Try to get something, some direction for it.
See what, yeah, get, so we can all hear her insight.
Whether or not Mike would be interested, I don't know, I'm a clue, whether we should listen to her first, or-
Sometimes I think the lobbyists have a little more power than the politicians.
I think you're right.
All right.
How to approach it.
We'll have her, yeah, see what you can come up with, find out from Mona.
Perfect.
If I don't tell you, ask me for an update on that report.
Okay.
And we'll be, like I say, I'll be working with Dallas. She's done all of her Crip work, and, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions, Lloyd?
Well, I, I can't name a ditch down there north of Seavers Quarry. But when that ditch was originally put in, it was a dredge boat. They didn't have diggers. They pulled it down there, and in order for the engineer to report to take the water, they made the ditch wider to handle the water. And when they cleaned that ditch, the engineer there, they said, well, now, with the equipment we have today, they can, we're gonna make it deeper, because the rock was so deep, or so shallow, that they couldn't, uh, get it down to grade level. So they just, in order to handle it, a lot of water, they just made the ditch wider, so, uh, it handled the water. And I can take you down there and, and show you where we went down, and when they were doing this, and they just made the ditch, they, well, they had a cap for the, um, grabber's arm. It just busted up that limestone, and made it the depth it was supposed to be originally, but with the old dredge boat floating, uh, you couldn't do anything with limestone. You just could go down to it. But in order to get it to, to take the water away enough, you had to have a lot of, lot of width in your ditch. But they, they just ripped that up and put it down to grade, and, and they, they had more trouble getting rid of the, the rock, the limestone rock, that they put it down to grade to get rid of that. You couldn't go out, further out in the field and dig a hole and bury it, because they've run into the same thing out there. I guess they never went down there and seen whether, how they disposed of that, but, you know, the, that was when Seavers Quarry was real small. Well, now, you know, it looks like it's getting whole pretty big, like, like some of the Gilmore area north of there, but, um, they've been, I don't know how many tons of rock that they've taken out of there now, and how much road damage they had there with the trucks coming out of there with loads of rock, or what.
The ditch cleaner up, too, that we were involved in, was part of that situation right there. We discovered in doing our preliminary report, that they hadn't got it down to grade for a stretch. And I think Lloyd absolutely was right, they just couldn't dig it back then. And I think it was Yellen that was doing that job. He was able to dig the bottom enough to get it down to grade. And I can't tell you what he did with the rock, I, I just don't know.
Well, did we ever get a number on that, uh, tin whistle out there at Seavers? Is that, it isn't big enough to, for the flow? And it's not hampering that?
Nope, there might be some bending on the end of it or something that could have some effect. What we haven't done, I don't think they got down there, got it was downstream from that pipe. It looked to me like that some rock had been deposited in that. And I just, they didn't notice this came up again, to be sure that we have that. I think the problem is just a little bit downstream from that pipe. We'll have more for you on that.
Think something silted in there, or?
It's almost like rock got in there. I don't know how it could've started to do a crossing there or something, I, I don't know.
It can happen.
Yeah. But we'll get a profile for you here in the next couple of weeks.
Put it on the list, please, to remind him to-
Yep.
In the next couple of weeks, or whenever. All right, thanks, Lloyd, if you come up with anything, you got my number.
Well, some of the, some just talk, talk about rocks, and, you know, there's some farmers out there that'll stop and pick up a rock. They don't wanna farm over and damage their equipment. They pick it up, and they take it up to the end, the road ditch, pitch it in the road ditch. And that's the same way as the dredge ditch.
Yeah, they sometimes put them on the edge of the ditch, and then they go roll down to the bottom.
Yeah, but they didn't, they didn't do it on purpose, but they put it up there, so it was out of their way. So, well, maybe somebody bumped it, and it took off and rolled in the ditch, but-
I remember trying to keep up with Lloyd, looking at some ditches and some outlet pipes. I swear he was probably eighty by then, uh, in two. And I was trying to keep up with him. He scampered down that slope, and checked the size on the pipe, and scampered back up. Phew, yeah. He's not a, he's not one of the lazy ones.
No.
Okay, well, we'll jack into it and keep on top of it, Lloyd.
Yeah, thank you, Lloyd.
Where we go.
Just one quick summary of that. This wetland thing, I believe, is something's gonna happen, as far as the, the tiling. I think Bruce may have said it, it has to be a petition, there'd be a report, and there'd be a good way to stop that, if, if it looked like that could go. I think the cost could be prohibitive, and I think there'll be enough to meet remonstrance. So, there's gotta be several steps taken before any tile is put in to take it a different direction, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, good deal.
Hey, on those two pictures I gave you?
Yep.
Can you get a, will that scan in there?
Where'd this come from?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I think we need to keep these for our, our file, too.
They come from that direction, or?
Yes, yeah, Bruce, where'd this come from?
That came from Kent.
Oh, Kent.
Probably an old newspaper already.
Well, jeez, that really makes me mad, huh? Been jacking with the trees for thirteen years.
Yeah, so it's been, this thing hasn't been, not-
There's too much of this.
There's the other, that's the earlier picture they gave earlier.
Yep, seen that one, too.
Uh, la- that's the lateral over on the south side of the, down towards the ditch. That's, I don't know, Kent, you want to say it back?
I don't have to say it back, I don't know if Dave got a chance.
Yeah, send it on to Dave. Yeah, I didn't realize that's been running that long.
Yeah, I just-
Of course, none of us have been on the board that long.
I was trying to look at it, and I'm kinda like, good golly gee, they're talking about this?
Good work.
Fourteen, fourteen years?
Good, well, there again, when you say back burner, good lord, we got about eighteen ranges going.
That's back when it was a cob-fired stove.
Yeah, you're talking about coal-fired stuff. Good, good one, Rick.
Yeah. I'll be around the meeting chair if something comes up.
All right.
Okay.
Are we done in drainage?
Do you have anything else, Trish?
I talked to Deb in Wright County about that, one dash twenty-seven.
Yep.
And her board people have not communicated with her. She was not aware of what's going on.
Oh. Well, I talked to Rick Raspison over there, and they said that he'd come in, asked for a work order, and, uh, they had, they had this outfit hired to come out and take a look at it. I think they fixed the problem for, and I, I talked to farmer, he says, yeah, he says, well, the price is a thing, we don't wanna spend a ton of money right now, so they're satisfied with just patching the repairs.
They are.
They're willing to do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, but I think you gave him something good to think about.
Well, I, you know, yeah, I've been with him, you know, this-
Did you tell him, Rick?
Yeah. So-
So I will talk to Deb again today and see what she knows.
Yeah.
From Rick. But it should be taken care of as a work order, then.
I, I believe so, 'cause they're-
On their side.
On their side.
Which will be passed on to our landowners also. So, but they went in, I think he said they were putting in about a hundred and twenty feet of pipe to get through the trees.
It's a double plot, or, looked like it's double wall, and I only seen it from driving-
Probably not perforated, keep the trees out.
It's right on the, right on that guy, but I got to drive with it.
A few more years.
Yeah, they fixed the problem.
Yeah.
But, I like-
Well, that's why it wasn't draining up north, 'cause the tree roots had plugged the tile.
Okay, so, so.
Good enough.
Good.
I, um, I communicated with Crystal Lloyd in Wester County, I don't know, November, I believe. And there was a work order in their county Jackson Township, section four. And this, the issue was the railroad. And Crystal is out on maternity leave, so I haven't dealt with her yet, and she'll be back in February. Um, Doreen, the auditor emailed me, yes, Friday, and suggesting we need to have you guys look at this and get on the same page, 'cause it is a shared district.
Which district is it?
It is three dash nine.
Three nine.
And, um, yeah. That comes up, I think, in Corinth, I believe. Or is it, it's either Corinth or Weaver. Um, so anyway, we need, it's Weaver, Chris said, no. Need to bring you up to speed on that, I got some stuff to pass out on this email. Um, I don't know. We need to get with them in a range of time to look at it, talk to them, apparently.
It must be, instead of, it is not a huge mess, must mean now a huge mess.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll see, I mean, Crystal at first didn't think it was going to be a very large issue. She had some contacts and stuff. And then it kinda became a, a mess.
Tell me Pioneer.
You say, is it south? South Pioneer, the one going straight south to Pioneer?
Yeah.
In thirty-three there?
Thirty-three? It's good. And, uh, there is a video, and you can see where the water's coming under the tile. Not even through it at that point.
Is this eight one doing on there?
Yes, it is.
One one two sixty-four?
Mm-hmm. And it's the last paragraph that says something about the board's free from eight fifteen till nine fifteen on that day. If we could maybe arrange a discussion at that time.
Are we the lead, or they?
Oh, we are.
Oh, shoot. That's a Tuesday. I suppose the lead will make them come in on Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know Crystal was handling it, she goes, it's in our county, if you just want me to handle it, that's fine. And then it became complicated, and she had her baby, so then-
Yeah.
Why would she do that?
I don't know, cannot believe that.
I'd have a baby and top it, right?
Well, here's three nine, it's over here.
Yeah, it's right up there.
So it must be down in here somewhere where the tunnel is?
That's what I wondered, I don't, I don't-
Jackson four.
To the same Wester County?
Yeah.
So it must be right in here.
Yeah.
Gotta be in the-
Because the railroad tracks gotta be in here somewhere.
Where's Pioneer on there, follow the tracks, right, straight through Pioneer?
Yeah.
You're correct.
That's the only way or location of tracks, it's gotta be south of Pioneer on the-
First mile?
Mm-hmm.
So it's gotta be in this stretch here.
Well, there's a tile, but obviously this doesn't go out of our-
Yeah, we don't see your map, go any further, someone's coming up.
Would that be a fair?
If that could be any smaller, there's no way that I could-
That'd be my guess.
With the tile. I don't know, what's the railroad say they got, uh?
I'm sure the railroad says there's nothing, they don't have any-
Then we'll get a special deal on how long permits will take.
In other words, they'll expedite permits, the way it sounds.
Hopefully.
I think it's a fall. That oughta be a fun deal there.
Yeah.
Actually, over the tile line and-
Gotta deal with railroad again, huh?
Yeah.
Put on your engineer hat.
Yep, here we go. We gotta wear our suits that week. Well, I guess, I'd just send her an email and say, we're ready, when, whenever you can wanna set something up, we'll try to make it work, and, like Rick said, we meet on Mondays, works best for us, but I guess-
Well, if we're the lead county, we're available-
On Mondays?
All day, yeah, on Mondays.
Okay, it says in the thing, if, you know, if your board members would like to go out and review this prior to the meeting, I'm sure that they can arrange it with their supervisors to review it.
Yeah, either that, or if they wanna handle it, 'cause it is in their county, you know.
I don't like to be down there in their county and-
Telling them what to do.
Well, somebody's saying, who the hell are you?
Yeah.
Well, I'm Humboldt County, too.
So do you guys want to arrange a time you can view it with them, you know, prior to the, the film? And so you're familiar with the situation on?
Well, that's always a good idea, but they, everyone's kinda familiar with it now. They're asking, how do you proceed with it? And they apparently have more information than we do, 'cause they have visited with railroad.
I'd say we give them the permission to take the lead on this, and we just kinda follow- I'd say we give them the permission to take the lead on this, and we just kinda follow up on it.
They might have somebody that's already interested and been working in that area and knows a little bit about it.
Yeah, 'cause we don't.
Yeah, they're just kinda keeping us informed, and that'd be good.
Which is nice.
Yeah.
Which is good.
Just email her and ask her.
Let's just, if, I mean, if it's good with the board, let's just give them permission to pre- proceed forward, keep us informed as to what you're doing, and if you need-
We're happy to have a-
Need to come for-
Talk with us, talk with us.
Yeah, we can set it up to have-
Thanks for the information.
Yep. That's gotta be something along where this goes.
Yeah, it's probably right in that, because he says it's section's four, so it's probably right there.
Wherever this-
It cuts across.
Wherever route that takes, which could go here and there, or probably more so up in here if it's in-
I find it rather interesting that there's a parallel line here.
Mm-hmm.
Evidently, there's an old main and a new main, and already one cuts through there. I can't see what it says, what size it's, it looks like.
Well, I can't see four, twenty-two.
Little.
We had a magnifying glass.
And I'm betting that goes right down in there someplace, and then probably heads over to the ditch.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make the motion to go out of the drainage.
Okay.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Cold, Gary, we're out of drainage. Twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm gonna run down to the restroom before we-
Is that there on fifteen minutes?
Okay.